Oh.
Terrific. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Groveland Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, September 10, 2018. The meeting will open at 6:30, 1:00 P.M. If you'll all rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one speaker for public comment, so if you would care to go to the podium and introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Elaine Wasney. I'm the Chair of the Board of Health in Town, and I'm here, I want to talk to the Board of Selectmen on our public health nurse appointment. As you, I'm sure, are aware, our longtime public health nurse Anita Wright recently retired. And the Board on August 9th appointed, made the vote to appoint a new public health nurse. We sent out a notice to her. She quickly accepted and was ready to come onboard, but we seem to be having a difficult time with this. This was concern, I thought initially, about whether she is a quote-unquote "special town employee," which she is not, and there seems to be a question about whether it's a conflict of interest due to the fact that she serves on other committees in town. Talked to the state, well, she's been in touch with the State Ethics Commission a number of times, and we're not getting an answer. I believe that we have been requested by the Treasurer, the Personnel Director, to get something. I believe she wants it in writing from the Personnel Department, from the Ethics Commission, which I don't know how much experience you people have dealing directly with the state, but getting something in any state department in writing on pretty much any topic is next to impossible. It's like pulling teeth. They really do not want to give us opinions in writing. So what I would like to request of the Board of Selectmen in a nutshell, and hopefully to expedite this, because we are into flu season, we're coming up, blood pressure clinics to resume, the Mass Department of Public Health has sent out an email to our previous health nurse who forwarded it to us. They're looking for assistance from local public health nurses and investigations of any Legionnaires' disease that comes up because of the recent outbreak, and we are frozen in time with no public health nurse. So what I am here requesting from the Board of Selectmen is the Board of Health be able to approach Town Council and just get a ruling from Town Council whether there is any kind of an ethics conflict because of her work on other town boards. And I think that's the most efficient way that we can hopefully get something. I can't imagine it would take Town Council, you know, more than a blink of an eye to come up with a decision where they deal with this so frequently. I'm sure they know the answer quickly and efficiently, and we can get on with the whole process here. So that is my request to the Board of Selectmen.
You got any comment?
It sounds to me like you're at an impasse, and it seems like a valid request. Now, I know when I was first elected to the Board, we got a letter from the Town Council that, he said, you know, "Call me anytime," he says, "if you have a question," and he said, "we'll deal with it." And I think it's a, I support the request. I think they should go forward with it. They were at an impasse. That's what Town Council is for.
That's my opinion.
And...
I'm hope, my opinion and my hope.
I think it's a, I think it's a good move.
Selectmen Dunn?
Well, I kind of agree what Mr. Watson just said. If you're not getting the answers that you need to get for whatever reason, that's what they're there for. I'm not sure it's our responsibility to see if there's a code, ethics violation with this person. It's usually their responsibility to do that, but if it's a town issue where it's hindering our town or whatever, I don't have a problem. Like you say, I don't think it's going to be a lot of money to have someone investigate it real quick and see if that's what we need to do and what will help to move this process along. My question is, how many board members have you guys got now?
Three.
Three.
We're the whole board.
Okay. And then you've interviewed the person, and qualifications are all there, and...
Made the job offer. She's accepted. She's come into the office to kind of try to get familiar with it, and then we ran into this.
And she's not getting the answers from the state either?
She seems to be getting the same person every time, what she keeps saying, referring her back to one, a section of the Ethics Code, which I've read over and over again, and I cannot see any possible conflict. I just am not getting any, her other positions are unpaid.
That's what I was just going to ask, are all her positions unpaid?
Yeah, and there's nothing that deals with public health in any form.
Is she signing any payroll or any, having anything to do with the other positions as payroll or authorization of money or signing for money?
I do not believe so.
If there was, I think that could be part of it.
But she won't be doing that with us.
Right, but I think, I'm not a lawyer, but I think that that's where the conflict can come in, if she was signing for checks or health checkbooks or anything like that, as long as that's not, if it's out. And I understand what you're saying, it has nothing to do with the Health Department, but I think because of her power and the position as a nurse and doing this over here, that's where I think the violation should come in. So I don't know the whole situation.
Now, my response to that is, if the person's involved with several volunteer organizations in the town, and if the person is involved in one, why wouldn't there be a conflict of interest in the volunteer position?
No, I don't...
So there's a question, and I think that's a smart move to go get a ruling from Town Council.
I'm not questioning the volunteer position, I'm just questioning if there was any kind of authority in them positions, that she has authority for signage of money or anything. That's all I'm saying.
I know, I can't speak 100%, but not that I'm aware of.
Right, okay. That's the only thing, and I don't see a problem with having Town Council, they can look at it.
Yes, Selectmen would.
When's the last time you reached out to the state?
She has been in touch with the state a number of times. I'd say at least three or four times in the last three weeks, probably.
And they keep referring you back to that section of Ethics?
That's what she's been reporting to us, is it just goes back to that. And I've read, you know, the Ethics, in my training in Ethics, I mean, granted, I'm not an expert, but I just, I'm not in any manner seeing any potential conflict there, and that's why we're looking for professional legal opinion.
So the state is referring you back to that section of the code, but not telling you that they can supply any kind of confirmation that you don't conflict with that code?
That is my understanding, speaking with a nurse, correct.
And you're saying you need to have something in writing that...
I'm not saying we need something in writing. I'm saying I believe that's the request that she's gotten from the Treasurer, to get something from them, looking for something.
I agree. I don't think the Town Council's going to take very long to determine this, maybe an hour or two.
You also...
Yep.
So I've worked with State Ethics quite a bit, so I'm surprised to hear that there's an issue, because they even have an online request form that they get back to you within one or two business days, and they have to respond within 30 days with a written response. So I guess I'm...
Specifically, she says they just keep referring her to section, I forget what it is, 12. I know I've looked at it a number of times.
Well, it says right on their website that you may request telephone or written advice. So I would like to see the documentation, that this is the person that they spoke with, this is the information that was provided. I'm just hesitant to have Town Council weigh in on something that the state should be providing a response on.
Your answer? My personal feeling is, it shouldn't take that long. I've seen them here before. Other people here have filled out conflict of interest, questionnaires, and the state has got back to them relatively quickly. And I'm also not one for this Board circumventing any laws or simple requests that might arise in the course of business. I don't find it an unreasonable request. As Selectman Carpenter just said, it seems like a very simple process. I've witnessed it here on numerous occasions. So I personally fail to understand what the real issue is, other than there could potentially be a conflict of interest that doesn't want to be disclosed and therefore disqualify the candidate. And just so we dot all the i's and make sure all the t's are crossed, there's no potential for any conflict. I think we should continue with the process as it is, weigh into the state, and the state should get back to them very quickly. And if not, again, I think Selectman Carpenter makes a good point, let's get some names, some dates, some times, and maybe we can follow up on why the state isn't getting back to us in a reasonable amount of time.
Well, she's getting verbal information from the Ethics Commission to refer, to refer back to this section. She's just saying that, she says, they have said this shorthanded, and she said she's supposed to get whoever the person on call is all the time. She says every time she's called, she's gotten the same person. She hasn't gotten anybody different than that same person, and they have commented they're shorthanded.
I understand, but as I said just a moment ago, I've seen cases here where people have got through the process relatively quickly and had, I've seen the handwritten, I mean, the written response from the State Ethics Commission on their ruling. It seemed very quick, very cut and dry, and I don't see a reason why we circumvent that process.
And I wouldn't make the request over the phone. There's, right on their website, there's an online request form, then you've got a paper trail of the requests that you've made. The other piece is, you know, if time is an issue, is making the appointment contingent on, let's make an assumption that the state's going to rule that there is not a conflict of interest. The appointment could be with a contingency that assumes that the state issues a decision that there's not a problem. So the appointment...
The appointment's already been made. I mean, the Board already...
Well, so I...
We don't have any, because they're an elected Board. They really, they operate in their own little...
So I would just have her start and just get the letter. And what's the delay in starting?
Up until today, basically, or at least initially, she was not given the paperwork to start, and then we were told that she can come by and collect it today. So I guess she can do that and fill out the paperwork and get on the roll.
And then I think she needs to provide documentation. Again, it can be requested online, by phone, or by mail. So I would suggest that she do it in a written form, and then she has documentation that she made that request.
I guess my question would be, with no disrespect to you or to anybody, but if she's on, I think, potentially four or five more other boards and committees, why is it coming up now? Why didn't it come up on committee number two, three, or four, or five? Why is it coming up now versus...
Well, those aren't paid, though.
This, I understand, is a paid position within the town. This is completely different than anything else that this person has been involved with in the past. That's what makes it completely different from anything else. I don't make the laws, I just try to follow them as best as I can.
So listening to the conversation, it sounds like this person has made a phone conversation through, to the State Ethics. Doesn't maybe sound like she's gone, but what Selectman Carpenter's saying in online, maybe she's not good with computers and can't go online. I wonder if we can get her a copy of what Selectman Carpenter's looking at, let her fill it out and try to get it back that way?
I'm sure we can get it online.
Okay, so maybe that's the route to go, because maybe she's done the phone calls, and she's not getting the answer or whatever, and maybe she could try doing it online as well. I mean, I understand what you're saying clearly, she's on other boards, but I hear what they're saying, it's a paid position, it may be a little bit different, but I still don't, personally, I don't think that it should be a big deal. You know, for whatever reason, I don't know what's going on, but...
Well, if they go that route, and I don't see any problem with talking to Town Council, but if they go that route with the online, let's give it till the next meeting. This sounds like something that they want to get this person onboard right away. We've got a meeting in another week. If we don't get a response from them at that time, then maybe we should, maybe we should go through Town Council.
But the response time is up to 30 days, so...
So it says...
She's not required to have a response in a week.
We've already waited a month. The appointment was August 9th.
Right. So you should have had a response by now, then if you went through this process, 30 days is the max. Somewhere along the line, you should have had a response by now.
But I think all those calls have to be documented, that on such-and-such-a-date I spoke with this person, it's, you know, I'm entitled to a written opinion within the 30 days. You just have to push them. I mean, it's their responsibility. I guess I don't, there's already existing case law, I'm just not sure what the conflict is and who's man, can you just repeat who's mandated you to do that?
Basically Denise.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I said, I just can't comprehend any kind of conflict.
Do we have a list of the volunteer roles that she plays?
She is on, all historical related, she's on the Historical Committee and the Historical Society, VZ Management, I don't know, VZ Management, something, I've got, Friends of VZ, VZ Park, and Groveland Activities Commission, and CPA Committee.
And in all those committees, I imagine there is a boatload of funds collectively in all those, correct?
I know she says she's the President on one and the Chair on the other, and I know from my work on different committees, they don't handle money. It's the Treasurer that handles all the money.
One, yeah, you know...
I really don't think there's a conflict, to be honest with you, and I think there's probably precedent in case law, because she doesn't have a fiduciary role in her role as a nurse.
No, absolutely not.
I mean, again, I think she should document all of the calls that she's made and make another request, and you should move forward.
And it should be really simple to get a ruling, one way or the other. I mean, it shouldn't...
It's among 30 days.
Well, again, I don't know what process was followed, I can't speak to the, I wasn't there, but it seems to me that, from the evidence that Selectman Carpenter is showing us, it doesn't seem that complicated and it shouldn't take that long.
In the town of Groveland, do we ever require, or have we required, that people have to bring a written copy of their Ethics to Personnel? Have we ever told anyone else in this town they got to get a written copy or...
Ours is written, whoa, whoa. What's the relevance?
We have to do ours yearly, and then we have to submit it to the Town Board.
Right, we have to take the online course.
Yeah, but that's taking the class.
There's an online course.
But that's still something that's paper trailed and documented that we take.
Right, but this is a disclosure, and there's no legal basis for the disclosure.
But again, what's the relevance, Selectmen Dunn? Only because if it hasn't been done in the past, maybe we haven't been doing it right. Now we're trying to get it right, and that's why we're trying to require these documents. So whether we did it in the past or didn't do it in the past, to me, is kind of...
I don't think we have a right to require that, to be honest with you, legally.
But my point in my conversation is, is it, is it our responsibility as an elected official or a hired official to take that, to take that exam, to take that course, and to take that avenue for the Ethics? Is it required from us as a hired official, being hired, are they required to have to bring the paperwork in? That's all I'm saying. I'm not...
I don't know, but in my opinion, the town is going to pay them, so we should do everything we should to make sure it's all right and there's no problems, nothing comes back to us, because at the end of the day, this is a town employee we're talking about.
Yeah, I got, yeah, I got you.
So I'd rather be safe than sorry. It doesn't seem like it's an extraordinary request that's been asked of this individual. It seems like a very simple process. It should have been done already. So I fail to understand, and I hate for this Board to sit here and rubber stamp something just because.
Well, I have an issue with the fact that there may be some health issues in the town that are being compromised as a result of this delay.
Well, there won't be, because as she stated already, she's been appointed and she's been serving in that capacity.
No, she has not been serving. She came in the first day, got familiar with the Office, and then ran into the roadblock, and that was the end of it.
But you said today she had filled out the paperwork and got the paperwork.
She was going to come in and pick up the paperwork, but there was still a hold on it until this opinion is given.
Yeah, I don't want to see a hold that jeopardizes any health issues in the town. That's my concern.
But we don't appoint this person, you do, right?
We do and we have, yes.
So we really have no control over who you appoint and who you don't appoint?
Except that we have someone that we have oversight over who's told her that this person needs this documentation, so I respectfully don't agree with that statement.
But there's a conflict. I mean, we're responsible for the person's pay, we're responsible for the person's behavior, I guess, as a town employee.
Yeah, but we don't have...
But we have no say in who gets hired, so...
We do have a say in who gets hired, absolutely.
Well, how do we?
If there was...
Did that person get interviewed?
If there was an egregious, well, we, but didn't that...
Did they come to us and say, "This is our list of candidates, and this is what we're thinking, can you, will you..."
Well, how did the appointment happen?
Board of Health, Board of Health has exclusive authority to hire, fire, and set pay scales, et cetera.
Okay.
That's, that's...
The responsibility falls on the Board of Health.
If that's the case, then I don't see how anything here is holding that up.
Right. If Board of Health has a responsibility, it's your responsibility to hire that person and deal with that person.
So a letter, a letter should not be delaying that.
So we just ignore this whole thing. I mean, if we feel it's not an issue, which we don't feel it's an issue...
The Board of Health, bottom line is, this is how I'm looking at it, I'm not speaking on behalf of these people, me, the Board of Health, it's your responsibility, it's your the hiring authority, you have the responsibility to get the paperwork that you need to get to prove to the Financial Director down the hall, get the paperwork over to her.
So you're still saying we still have to prove it to her?
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, she is the Ethics, her contract, her contract includes, she's the Ethics Advisor Person to this Board and to the town, so that is part of her role, but I don't think that precludes you from having this person start with the caveat that that letter has to happen.
Right.
And if there were a conflict, then that person probably would not be able to remain in that position.
It seems, it seems like the simplest thing would be to let the Board of Health contact the Town Council, and like everybody has said, it's not going to take much time. And I don't see that, I don't see into taking an hour or two a time.
I just don't think it's responsible.
And that would solve the whole thing.
I just don't think it's a responsibility of Town Council, I don't think it's a good use of the money we pay Town Council, especially when the state provides that service for free of charge. And that's what we want. We want an unbiased opinion from the state. That should be really easy to get.
Because the other thing is, even if Town Council weighed in on this, it would not be binding. They're not the entity that makes those decisions. So they'd have to reach out to Ethics. So they don't have...
The bottom line is, the bottom line is, the buck starts with you people. You're the hiring authority. The buck starts with you, okay? Then it goes to the Financial Director, and she's looking for paperwork, and they have 30 days to get the answer over to her through Essex, and then this lady, a person, man, whatever, niece, taking F exam anyway.
Well, that's completely separate, every...
I understand, I understand, this exam, but they're going to have to do that anyway. And like someone just said, put the person on, hire the person, and if there's an issue down the road, then the person goes. I mean, if there's an ethics problem, they go. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you.
So as long as she can be hired and she can start collecting her paycheck while this is going on.
I'm not the Financial Director, I'm the Board of Selectmen, I'm not the hiring authority, and I'm only speaking on behalf of me. You're the hiring authority, you're a Board, you're three members of the hiring authority to this person.
But I think the other piece is, if she's called these people three or four times, hopefully she's written down the dates and that this is presenting a barrier to her beginning her position. They have a responsibility to reply within that 30 days. I'd use that first date, and I would demand a letter immediately. They have to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Perhaps we could, we could put this on the agenda for the next meeting to see if there's anything transpired in a week's time.
I'll consider it, but really the ball is in their court. So moving right along, we have the approval of the warrants. We have motion to approve payroll warrant 19-09 in the amount of $154,448.47.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor. We have bill warrant 19-09 in the amount of $1,176,439.79, which breaks down as follows. Town, $35,748.76. Water and sewer, $40,231.14. Payroll withholdings, $51,780.72. Light bills, $63,907.51. Grants and revolving account, $122,570.90. Chapter 90, $67,300.10. And the pentecost assessment is $794,972.66.
Could we get a breakdown on the grants and revolving? Kevin, do you have a...
Any further breakdown on the...
I don't have the...
Okay, can we make a note?
I don't have it. Ellen would have the breakdown of the warrant if I could tell you. Because you guys signed it last week.
That's right, we came in on Monday. Let's see, made it beat?
I don't think it's in there. That's the $800 one.
No, that's just the $800 one. I'm sorry, Selectman Watson, we just don't have the answer at the moment.
Okay, okay.
Can we...
I seconded that.
Get that answer for next week, Watson, that'd be great, appreciate it. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion beyond Selectman Watson's? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? And we have bill warrant 19-07-2 in the amount of $800.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Okay, we have the appointments of Susan D'Angelo, 304 Sennas Street, Groveland, to the Cultural Council through June 30th, 2024. Holy cow, that's a long appointment.
That's a big appointment.
Yeah, kidding. I don't believe I see Ms. D'Angelo in the audience.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Susan D'Angelo to the Cultural Council through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Manly comment, is anybody, I don't know this woman, is anybody familiar with her?
I know her. And she's into historical buildings and what have you, and I personally know her, and I think she would be, do a very well job in that position.
Another person that's very dedicated and...
Does a lot for the town.
Yep, exactly.
Is six years normal appointment for that female?
I don't know. Six years seems like an awful long time, doesn't it?
I don't know, I've never seen a six-year appointment, that's...
Could this be a typo?
Probably not.
Only, huh?
Probably not.
Only US Senators have six-year, six-year terms. You think it's really a six-year term?
There's a few on the appointment list that have three or six-year terms.
Should take a look at that a lot closer. So we have a motion and a second. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Those opposed? Abstained? Moving right along, we have discussion and possible votes. We have the fall town meeting date, Monday, November 26, 2018, is the preferred date. Monday, October 29, 2018. Town Clerk would like to give up the night for early voting.
The October one is if you guys don't approve or vote on the first date, which actually gives us all enough time to get everything together and get it out to the public. The October one is just Denise said it's too soon, and then it's also a voting day, so fans should give up this room for voting if you guys decided to have a meeting that night.
Yeah, no, I think we discussed this the last meeting, and as much as we hated to, November 26th kind of worked the best. I mean, it's an unfortunate date, because it does fall right during that...
Right after Thanksgiving.
But considering all the other options, this seemed like the best we could do.
So I make a motion that we approve that November 26, 2018 date as the...
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Abstained? Great. So we have open the special town meeting warrant.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we open the special town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No, all those in favor?
Yep.
Uh, seeing as I'm rather new at this, I'm not sure where we go from here.
I think it's the, on the opening of the town warrant?
Uh, yes.
I don't think we have to do anything, I just think it means that if members of the community or different committees have anything that they want to bring forward, it's open for them to bring it before the board between now and whenever we close the warrant.
Okay.
And I don't think we have to ask further on it tonight.
Alrighty then, moving right along, votes of the board, made it from the July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen meeting.
They look to be in order, and I move for passage.
We have a motion, any second?
Seconded.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Yep.
Against executive session minutes from August thirteenth, two thousand eighteen?
Those also look to be in order, pretty accurate, and I'll, I'll move for passage.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Okay, we approve for the approval of cemetery commission's request to increase the cost of cremation burials from six hundred to six fifty. Do we have anybody from the cemetery commission to speak on this matter? Oh, please, welcome.
Hi, I'm Mike Castren Ellis of Cemetery Commission. Uh, the costs, uh, that we're being charged for the cremation vaults has increased about two or three months ago, and we'd like to recover that cost increase of fifty dollars.
Seems a reasonable request to me.
And this, this also still sets the town of Groveland way below some of the other places.
We're, we're a bargain, still.
Mike, just off the top of your head, uh, I'll put you on the spot.
Oh, great.
Uh, you gotta do it. Uh, what's, what's the high, high end of some of these other cemetery, do you, do you have any idea?
You know, I'm really not sure, it depends, uh-
You could have said almost anything, I would have wanted.
Well, yeah, uh, some of them are getting up as high for just a simple cremation, uh, where the cemetery provides all of the, um, equipment, if you will, is up as high as nine hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Again, we're obviously very low on the scale.
Yeah. Good, he's good. Somebody care to make a motion?
No, I'll make a motion that we approve the cemetery commission's request to raise the cremation burials to six hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? My only question would be, when we raised some other fees, there was some fees that required town meeting approval? Would this be one of them?
I don't believe so, you'd have to check with Denise, but I don't, I don't think-
Our understanding was, we obviously ran through Denise, was that it did not.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure we don't do something, and then there's a roadblock because we didn't know what we didn't know. Uh, that's my only question, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just stay here for the next one, may I, Brad?
Uh, okay, so to approve cemetery commission's request to increase Bob Polizotti's-
Palazotti.
Palazotti, I was pretty close, hourly rate to fifteen dollars per hour, Mr. Palazotti was hired at twelve dollars per hour, but was increased eighteen dollars per hour while the former position was vacant. So, we're meeting him halfway?
Well, uh, we have, we'd like to give him more than that, but we have financial constraints with our wage item. Again, we bounced this by Denise, uh, at that rate of fifteen dollars an hour, uh, we should be okay to make it through to the end of the fiscal year. Quite honestly, what Bob did for this town during a really difficult period, he really stepped up for us, and I'm sure you recall, uh, the Selectman back then, uh, made the recommendation that we increase his rate, um, to the full-time wage hourly rate. We had to manufacture that rate and figure out what it was. And he did step up for us, uh, but at this point, uh, we're limited because we do have somebody new onboard now, we have a new foreman in place. Uh, and the good news is, is that that new foreman with just the one part-time individual who's now, you know, Bob's back to part-time, uh, they're keeping up with all the needs up there, uh, and we're in a really good place.
Oh, great.
Certainly a lot better than we were six months ago. So, but again, the, the rate of pay up at the cemetery is something that our board is going to have to address, and it's, obviously, we're gonna have to address it with you. We're really low. Uh, we have some real talent right now, and it's something, if we're gonna hold on to people like this, we need to make some adjustments, there's no question in my mind.
Yes, Selectman Watson?
Um, Mike, um, I know, uh, Bob did a great job, and he, um, he was actually, he was there by himself for-
He was.
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
Um, and I hate, hate to see you lose this guy.
Exactly.
Um, is there, is there another, um, is there another, uh, area in your budget that you could transfer money to, to the wage account? You got, we got a town meeting coming up here at, at some point, is it, do you have money in another account that you could transfer, that you're gonna be over?
Well, my understanding, again, this was through Denise's office, we really can't be transferring money in that fashion, at least, particularly at this time of the fiscal year. Uh, we've kind of made our bed with our wage line item. And for us to adjust it beyond that, uh, for what I think you're looking towards, trying to attempt, uh, is not something we can do at this point in time. Uh, that's not to say that, again, one of the things, the high priority items for myself at least, and I, I can almost speak, I think, for the rest of the board, is that we need to bump these rates up. We can't keep part-time staff, it used to be you could get high school kids that come over, uh, for the summer, uh, at twelve dollars an hour, you can't get them anymore. Uh, Bob was a real find for us this year, uh, and like I said, he's obviously worked out quite well for us.
But in, but in retrospect, he, uh, and I know he wants to work part-time up there, but he, he's also, uh, getting cut from, uh, last year, he was able to work during the winter, he was able to clear snow, uh, around the town hall, and, um, and he's, he's gonna lose that because we, we have a full-time custodian. So, I'm just looking to see if there's something you could do on.
Again, this is just, you're asking me for ideas here that I can't support without my board's recommendation, obviously, but my opinion at this point, and I am the new guy on this board as well, so I'm, I'm learning as I'm going here. It seems to me that, uh, the need for something more than a seasonal, part-time assistant up there to the foreman, uh, is warranted, uh, keeping somebody onboard, uh, and sharing them perhaps off-season with the highway department? Uh, or the custodial staff here at the town hall, uh, that would be an avenue to look at. And Denise has made some recommendations in that regard, but again, it's just, we're still in the, you had to research phase of what the possibilities are.
You don't want to, you don't want to lose this guy.
I really don't.
Because you, uh, you know, you know what you've done with the, with the part-time help in the, in the past, some of the younger people.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, I'm just looking to see if you can help me a little bit.
The issue that we also have, and this maybe puts it in perspective for you, um, the rate of pay at eighteen dollars an hour that we were giving Bob, uh, during the interim here, is what his boss is currently making, the new foreman. So we certainly can't have the foreman and his assistant making the same hourly wage.
Well, I, I looked it up from when we, when we hired him, uh, just about a month ago, in fact, we probably have it in our paperwork here, I think he was eighteen forty-six an hour, somewhere around there.
Yeah.
I, I'm just, you know, with another buck, buck and a half an hour, from, from fifteen to sixteen and a half, uh, it, it doesn't seem like it's that, like it's that big of a, a jump.
Well, it's not, except that if you run it out to the end of the fiscal year, uh, when we would be hiring our seasonal staff back again in May, uh-
You blow your budget.
Looks that we will just barely make it, in fact, there's a slight deficit, so we might have to start him a week later or something like that, but we'll have a better handle on that at the, in November, when the seasonal staff stops.
Okay.
Selectman done.
So hopefully you've had a conversation with him that-
Uh, our chairman has, uh-
Work with him, figure it out next fiscal season or whatever, or whatever we can do?
Yeah, um, I have personally not spoken with Bob yet about the situation, and I'm going to, uh, again, it hurts to do that to him after what he did for us this summer. But we also have to be realists, I can't be recommending-
Right.
Bob making the same amount his boss makes.
One thing, one thing that I would like to go through the chair and ask, if we can draw up a letter and, and, and a letter of thanks through the, our finance director for what he did this summer to help step up for us, I would like to draft up a letter and get it off the bottom, show our appreciation for how he helped us out.
Absolutely, sounds like a great, uh, recommendation for a volunteer of the month award. Doesn't it?
Well, he wasn't volunteering, he was getting paid.
Well, he's getting paid, but he, he was, he was volunteering-
Well, true.
A lot more than he was getting paid for, right?
Right.
I think that's the essence.
Well, he was, again, what we did is we took that foreman position that was from the individual that left us.
It was vacant.
And we made it, uh, it was an annual salary, and we converted that into an hourly rate based on the hour, hours per week, and that's what we came up with, and we came up to that eighteen and change.
Right.
Anyone above and beyond during that time?
Absolutely, uh, so we asked a lot of them with limited experience.
I'm sure we can do that.
I don't know if we can ask them.
Oh, I'm sure we can.
Caitlin.
Put that on there.
Uh, what, uh, I'm sorry, I, I missed that.
Certificate of appreciation or something like that.
Get him, get him in here and can thank him, thank him.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
You know, sometimes a little thank you goes a long way.
Well, I've, I know I've done a lot of those verbally over the last three months, but, yeah, I agree, something, uh, like of that nature would, would be very well received.
I think that's it, thank you.
Selectman, yeah, Selectman would.
Well, I'm good.
Um, unfortunately, you know, like Rick Pitino said once, said, "I'd like to buy the world, but we can't afford it," uh, it's just, you know, the nature of the game. Like to give him more, it sounds like a, a great individual, somebody we want to keep around, but, you know, like you said, we're dealing with the realities of situations, and those realities don't change no mu, no matter how much we wish. So for now, I guess it's the best we can do, and if we can plan a little better and scrape the, some other places, uh, maybe we can come up with some more for next fiscal year. But I, I think your request is reasonable, um, although probably short of what you'd really like to do, uh, it's the best that we can do at the time. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve the cemetery commission's request to increase, increase Bob, um, Paul, uh, Palazotti's, uh, hourly rate to fifteen dollars an hour.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Against? You all good?
No, I, I already voted.
Okay, I didn't see that, so I looked the other way. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next is to accept the resignation of Steve Crawford from the Capital Improvement Committee effective August thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Alrighty.
Any, any reason for his resignation from the, uh, Capital Improvement Committee, do you know?
It does not say in the letter of resignation that was provided with the package. I have my own opinions why they, or many of the members have recently resigned, but-
Anything you're willing to share that we can straighten out to him?
Well, it's like I said, uh, you know, when I got the, uh, letter from, uh, Mr. Pappas, I served in that committee for four years, it's, it's a very under-appreciated committee, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I don't think I did it. I did, I don't think I did any better as, as chair in recognizing the importance of that committee while I was here, uh, which I, I will regret for probably many years to come. They were the radar, they were the early warning system. They, in my opinion, provided a vital service to the town in, in long-range forecasting, um, which we haven't really done a very good job at, but we, now that we have, um, some capital reserves and, and built up some, some savings, um, it would be nice to, um, to be able to plan for capital expenditures like that, uh, in the future.
Is there anyone left on the board?
The only one I know of at the moment is, uh, Mr. Kevin Cuniff, another longstanding, uh, member of that board, who, um, I imagine is equally frustrated as, as the other members, and as I was at times, um, as a member of that board.
What, what's the frustration with it?
The frustration is, you sit down basically from, oh, maybe a couple of weeks ago, we'd start, and we'd go to the end of January and try to put together a roadmap, a plan, from all the departments, showing all the capital expenditures for the next five years, and we tried to do e, even a better job by extending it for ten years. And trying to bring that to the board and, and making them aware that these items were going to be needed, that funds were going to be, um, have to be found in order to, uh, make these capital expenditures. The, um, ladder truck is, is a great example, um, the communication systems at the, uh, police station, another great example. And it's, the frustration was the failure of this board at times to recognize, uh, their importance of trying to give us an idea of what's coming down the pike that's going to be expensive, and so that we have time to prepare for that expenditure and find the funds, appropriate the funds, to make those things happen. Uh, that's the frustration, uh, now that I sit on this board, I'm part of that, I'm sorry to say that I, I'm part of that, uh, cause of frustration, I don't think I've reached out to them enough, I don't think I've done enough to include them in the conversations at times.
Right. I think the breakdown, not to interrupt you, was, when I was a chairman, I had to come in, the breakdown was, that board and this board didn't do enough talking back and forth, with the finance board.
Yep. I don't, I don't think this is on any one person, though.
No, 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 I know, I know, no, I know, but I'm saying, and that's how this government ran back in the day, this board did its thing, that board did their thing, the finance board did their thing, and no one intermingled, and that's where the frustration all became.
Absolutely.
When a, when a ladder truck came paying for us, and we needed to buy a ladder truck or a squad truck or a radio system, we didn't have the money, we couldn't find the money, and they said, "Well, here we are at, um, two thousand and fifteen, and we're supposed to be getting them a squad truck, and we say we can't do it." They get frustrated, that's very understandable, they did all the work, and they get very frustrated, because wait, they're thinking two thousand and fifteen, we should be getting a ladder truck, but us sit on this board, and we see there's no money to do it, and we can't do it this year, we have to put it out a year or two down the road, that becomes frustrating for everybody, and I think that's how it all, that all came about. And I think that's how it all, that all came about.
There are other examples, and I don't think there's any one person to blame.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I take personally a lot of responsibility, because I've been chair since May, and I failed to, to reach out to them and communicate how valuable I thought their work was, having sat on that board for four years. So, I take a lot of responsibility for the resignations that have come about in recent weeks and months. But, it was a frustrating, it was a frustrating, frustrating time. And it's unfortunate. But, I'm not sure now, at this point, what I can do to, to resolve it. I've done and said my best mea culpa's, and they really haven't produced much fruit, so I'm afraid where we're at, at our own hands. And we'll just have to deal with it and somehow move on as best as we can.
Well, how about, how about something, we've had a couple resignations recently. Some of them may be personal, some of them may be frustration, but was there any thought to doing similar to what you might do with a, with a regular town employee, do an exit interview? And, and get their feelings behind that? You know, they may be able to help us out, and if there's a problem, maybe can be fixed. But, you know, unless they speak out to, to somebody, we're not going to know that.
I think that's a particularly excellent idea, something that I'd like to see followed up on, something that I'd like to see as part of the new employee personnel handbook that we incorporated in there, so it becomes standard operating procedure to do that, because I think we can learn a lot from people walking out the door. Yes, Selectman Wood?
Steve lives near me, I'll talk to him, if you want me to.
I'd appreciate it. I mean, again, I think that the committee serves a vital function in the community, and hate to see it go away, that, that type of early warning system is really needed to plan. And now that we actually have a town planner that we can utilize-
Right.
It'd be nice to have a capital improvement committee that could work hand in hand with that planner and finance in this board, to realize the full potential and goals of the town, and what this town can be. Shall we, would you like to table this resignation, Selectman Wood? Is that your intention?
I don't know.
We meet again next week?
Oh, I don't know that I'll catch him before then. I mean, I'll reach out to him and talk to him. I don't know that that's going to change his mind or anything, I'm just more long line, getting some feedback.
And we can certainly reappoint him if he so desires, correct?
We could do that.
Yeah, I think that we should honor his requests and go from there.
Well, we honor it for now, and if he changes his mind, we can change ours.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, so, I don't even know if we have a motion?
I think we had a motion and a second.
Did we?
No?
No.
We had a lot of discussion there.
Somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. We accept Steve Crowder's resignation from the Capital Improvement Committee, effective a week ago, August thirtieth, ten days ago.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Okay, accept the resignation of Ann Powell, Library Assistant, effective September thirteenth, I believe in my conversations, I believe this resignation was more due to a change in life status, if I recall, something about another position or going back to school.
I'm not sure where she's going.
I would make a motion that we accept the resignation, resignation of Library Assistant Ann Powell, effective September thirteenth.
Well, I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Moving right along. Old or unfinished business? We will start with Selectman Wood. Any old or unfinished business?
Nothing under old or unfinished business, no.
Selectman Carpenter?
So, I note in reviewing the August twentieth minutes that Selectman Wood has been appointed to be the liaison between the board and the police department and fire department. And I guess one thing that I would like to revisit is a request that I made earlier in my board membership about getting reports from departments-
Mm-hmm.
-that we have not been receiving anything, particularly Chief Gillan was here a month or two ago about the opiate issue, and, I mean, I think there's things going on that the board should hear about, and the town should be aware of on an ongoing basis.
Okay.
I'll agree with that. I think that this board should see all the departments as on some kind of regular revolving basis, so that we don't get any surprises to offer them personally. So, maybe we can talk about that as agenda items, and just begin to have that revolving kind of communication correspondence.
I think some other boards' meeting minutes get filed automatically with the clerk's office, but I don't think that every department has some type of entity that has an ongoing meeting.
No, probably not.
Yeah. So, the ones that don't?
Don't, are the ones we'd like to speak to on a regular basis, that we can just, you know, make sure everything's going well.
You all set?
Selectman Dunn?
So, I have a couple, anyway. Under old and unfinished business, we had land sales on Salem Street, and in one of our prior meetings, we were told that the land sales were going to be done by the end of August. This was, this land was, entered into an agreement for sale back when I was a chairman, and it's been approaching over a year. So, I asked the finance director last week, I had called and said, "What's going on?" And I was told that the land sales is sitting with the attorneys on the other side. I'm going to ask tonight through the chair, if I can get a letter drawn up through whoever it needs to go to, and ask that other side if they plan on moving with this, and if they're not planning on moving with it, and planning on passing on this, that we put it back up for sale again, because it's potentially well over a hundred thousand dollars that can go into our general fund, and we could use for tough times or a rainy day. It's been, it was told in previous meetings that they needed to do the land swap on Wood Street, and I've heard nothing but pushing the, you know, the cart down the road, and I feel at this point in time, it's not moving. And I think that we as a board, I ask if we can push this and get a letter to the other side somehow, and get this thing moving again. I don't know what's going on with it, but it's frustrating to me personally.
Land swap. Might there be somebody in the audience that knows anything about that land swap deal?
Wasn't there an issue, though, with the title, or wasn't there...
They needed, I don't think we can say on camera or whatever, it was just that was taken care of, and the deal was supposedly set to go. They've accepted our request. The land was ready to be sold to them, and it was put on hold again because they were doing a land swap on Wood Street with the town. They wanted to resolve that issue first. Once that issue was done, we could proceed with the Salem Street deal. I was told, the board was told, if everyone goes back in their minutes or whatever, the end of August, we were going to pass papers on the Salem Street property. It's now the end of September, nothing's been done, and I think this is just being pushed down the road for whatever reason, I don't know. But, if you people as a board want to end it, end it. But, I just, it's something I started, it was something that I put my time and energy into, and I'd like to see it. And it's good for the town. It's good for the town, because we can put money in our general fund.
Agreed. I'll follow up on that and see what we can do about expediting that, that sale. You know, what's the road blocks to it?
Okay. The other thing I had is, we entered into an agreement with an outside company to review the fire department. I haven't heard anything what's going on with that review. I know in the last meeting, maybe not yet, maybe hasn't had time. I'd like to know how that's proceeding, if we're proceeding with potentially hearing something back from them.
What was that?
We actually did. It was about the MRI, the study, and we actually did talk about that last meeting.
Okay.
They have already begun their fact-finding mission, I guess, and begun to do the interviews and-
Okay, good, so to move forward.
Request the documents. Yes, I'm not sure what stage they're in, but they have begun.
So, the process has been started, so I didn't hear that, so, well, that's good.
I believe that was...
I think it's... The study's going well, they are gathering information, and they will do the onsite visits.
There you go.
Okay. That answers that question. And the last thing is, I was wondering, and probably not because the finance director's not here, but how the Pines process is going with the bathrooms and the process down there as far as getting that project done. I know last time we talked, the bathrooms would be in, taken care of by the highway department, et cetera, et cetera. I would just like to know if we're proceeding with that. And secondfold to that, I know we're talking about someone possibly doing a water park down there, which I haven't heard how that's proceeding, but again, I would like to put before this board, maybe we could put a CPC project that together, because you can use rec money for a CPC project down there, and possibly take something on ourself as a board.
I would love to work with you on that CPC project, because the playground there is so in need of a-
Update.
Update, yeah, that it's not funny. It borderlines dangerous and some of those things.
And the pavilion needs work, it needs paint, it's rot, it's got a lot of rot in it and what have you. I just don't think we should let it fall apart, what's falling apart.
Not after what we put into it.
Coming up into the time of year, if we're going to do a CPC project, we should talk about it and move something forward.
Well, reading, reading from the minutes of the last meeting, that was brought up, and waiting on a plumbing inspection, and then the finished work will be done. And also, the board will need to decide who's going to clean and unlock and lock the bathrooms. So, that, we're waiting on a plumbing inspection, and then they'll finish the work, so I don't know if that's been done yet.
I don't know, but I know that if anybody that was down there this Saturday, it was a beehive of activity. You had football, you had softball, you had baseball, you had boaters. I don't think you could fit another car in that parking lot with the number of people there today. And I'd also like to add to that Pines list, the speed bumps that I've been requesting. Still have little kids running back and forth across that parking lot, because the playground is on the other side from the ball fields. It makes it a very dangerous situation, it's only, accidents bound to happen. Mr. Dunn, Selectman Dunn, are you all set?
Yep.
Okay. Selectman Wood?
Watson.
Watson, I'm sorry.
I'm down this side.
WW.
Yes.
Okay, John. I have nothing.
I just had a follow-up question.
Yeah, just one sec. I have a follow-up question for you, Selectman Watson. You were going to go out a couple of weeks ago with the road commissioner about some of the work that was done last year. Were you able to coordinate that at all, about some of the sinking roadway?
Well, we were, according to the finance director, we're waiting to hear from the, from the engineers, and as yet, I haven't been out. Apparently, they still haven't set up a time to go and do that.
Okay, so, so the holdups on their end, they haven't gone back to us?
That's my understanding, they haven't gone back to us.
All right, let me, let me follow up on that. See why they won't meet with us. Selectman Carpenter, you had something?
Yeah, so there's been some discussion about the road commissioner retiring in the near future, and I guess I just wondered, what is going on with the appointed position? That is, I know that that had to go before the state or something, in order to be come.
Yes, I, I guess it still has to be voted on by state legislature, that we're changing an elected position to an appointed position. I don't know where that stands.
If they're in summer recess, is last we heard, and they hadn't worked on it, because they were in summer recess.
So...
So, I just didn't know sort of what the status is of our current road commissioner, and sort of where we stand in the process of...
Our current road commissioner is still road commissioner.
Okay.
With no, I've heard nothing, no plans that he's going to retire, resign, or any such, you know, action.
At least until next election, which I believe is two years?
No, I believe it's May.
Is it May?
Well, he told someone that I, that was working up at VZ Park, that he was retiring in December.
Well, that may be true. As far as I know, we've received no official communicate that I know of regarding his future actions or inactions. I know that, I would like to begin the process of identifying what the requirements would be, and setting up some kind of job description, so that we have something ready to go immediately upon his notice that he's going to resign or retire, so that we can get someone in place ASAP. I think it's too important position to let flounder, flounder for too long before we find an adequate replacement, a permanent solution.
So, I think we should make that for an agenda item for next time we meet, or the next, whenever, next couple meetings, we make an agenda item to discuss it.
I think you, I think, I remember seeing something from the state about some email regarding it. I don't know if it was, they were headed through legislation or something.
Last we heard, it was in, it was in summer recess.
Yeah, well, yeah. But, I think there's still work to be done at the state level before we can do anything at our level.
Well, I, I think we can prepare for-
Job descriptions.
Job descriptions, right?
Right.
That we can prepare and be ready, so that once we do get the go-ahead, we're ready to run with the ball right away, that we, there's no lag in the process on our part, trying to find a permanent solution and replacement for that.
And I guess the other piece is that if, if the road commissioner were to decide that he was leaving in December for, for some reason, what would be our options? Because would we, would we need to have a special election? Like, what would happen?
Well, if the legislature hasn't given us approval to switch that by then, I imagine it would require a special election, but maybe not. It may be that this board is able to appoint-
An interim.
An interim.
Or there's a highway foreman, maybe the foreman could take the position for the time being type thing. That's, I think it's an agenda item we should discuss. We're getting to the point where we really should discuss all that.
It's getting close, and I would hope that the current highway commissioner would give us adequate notice. I know he's made his, his feelings known that he would assist us in preparing a job description and things like that, to help us out upon his departure. But, as much notice as he could give us would absolutely be greatly appreciated and beneficial to all of us here. So, maybe we can reach out to him and see if he will share his thoughts with us on those matters. I don't know. Again, he's an elected official and has no really responsibility to this board whatsoever, so...
So, do you want to go through Caitlin and Denise and have them write a letter?
Yeah, or I can reach out to them through them and see if he will be willing to share his thoughts with us, so that we can be in the best shape we can possibly be upon his departure. I don't want to get, I hate to get caught in my pants down, sorry for the expression, but that's what would happen if we were left without an adequate replacement, especially in the dead of winter in December. That could be potentially ugly around here. Anything else? Selectman Carpenter? All right, we have Selectman's reports. Start with, Selectman Watson, anything going on?
I have nothing.
How's the senior senate project going? Anything working on that?
Well, we're working slowly. Actually, I'm scheduled to meet, I think it's next week with the council on aging, at their meeting. Just see what the date was at. Yeah, next week, I'm scheduled to meet with, at the council on aging meeting.
Great. I know I've talked to a few members of the former committee, trying to re-energize that committee. There's a potential to have a million and a half dollars toward that project if we so desire, and if that happens, if the state pulls the trigger on that funding, I want to be at the starting line, ready to go when that gun goes off.
I've been in contact with a couple members of the committee, maybe, at this point, maybe former committee.
Former committee.
I'm not sure how that goes, but they are still interested in moving forward.
Do they know about, there's a potential grant sitting up there from the state we can get for a million and a half dollars?
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
Last time around, they said there was no grant money out there, so hopefully this time, they know we can hopefully put our hands on that, and we can maybe grab it.
No, the ones I've been in contact with, I've let them know that there's a potential of this money, and I really want them to, my desire is to try to reform that senior senate committee, maybe some old blood, maybe some new blood and some new thinking, and- And if we get that money, like I said, I want to be at the starting line when that gun goes off. I want to be in the race. I think it's something that seniors in this town deserve. And if we can help them, we should, we should do what we can.
Well, hopefully it won't be the next meeting. The next, our next meeting is the next, this coming Monday. But the meeting following, I, I should have an update at that point after I speak with the COA at that meeting.
Okay, great. Selectman Dunn?
Yeah, so on the pine signs and all that stuff, must say that I haven't had a chance to sit at my desk and draw up the price sheets and what have you and get it over to either Caitlin and Denise. But hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I will. I have plenty of time. I have till spring to do that because early winter anyway. But unfortunately, work has been very busy. But I will get to it because my slow season's just around the corner. But it's, I got everything ready to roll. I just got to sit down and draft it up and send it over for them to print it. And then, once that done, we're going to wait till probably somewhere around the end of November to the end of December. Start making phone calls and start bringing, you know, I can't bring the money until town meeting, but I can at least get some commitments at that point.
Sure. You might want to come down here the next couple of Saturdays and take some pictures of the activity down there and show the prospective sponsors.
Right.
How many eyes are going to be on those signs, day in and day out. Might attract some more sponsors. Anything else?
Nope.
Great job. Selectman Carpenter, anything with the town center committee?
No.
Is that still an active body or has it?
Um, I don't know. Yes.
We don't know, yes?
Well, Mr. Dempsey's sort of in charge of that. And he nodded his head. So then, yes.
Okay. But we haven't had a recent meeting?
No.
Okay. Selectman Wood?
Yes. So I did meet with the police and fire chief last week, I think. The police, the budget's good. Jeff actually returned some money to the town.
Yes, he did.
That he was able to squeeze out. So kudos to him on that. Looking for projects that have to do with cameras and security around the complex, along with school stuff and that civil fingerprint program that he wants to spearhead too, that he's going to get more information for us on. The civil fingerprint program for the vendors that come in and make sure that they're clean. Met with the fire chief. He is grasping, getting ahold of all, you know, where everything is and how things are supposed to be working. He's done a good job of cleaning everything up, getting everything organized. Wants to look at getting town email addresses for everybody so they're not on Gmail or personal emails, which is, I'm in favor of. Make more efficient processes, delegating duties. And then I plan to meet with them at least once a month going forward.
Great, awesome. Terrific. As far as my active involvement in the high school building committee, we have, we have a meeting tomorrow. So I really have nothing to report on that I haven't reported on already. Next Monday, I'll potentially have some more to report on in that committee meeting, which will happen tomorrow night at 6:30. So I am done with my reporting. So let's move on to correspondence. We have minutes from the August 6, 2018 meeting. We have minutes from the August 20, 2018 meeting. We have a letter from the building inspector to Robert Lay regarding Georgia Street. And we have a letter from the health agent regarding the Merrimack River shoreline. And now we come to finance director's time. You're on.
The only thing would be for the September 11 services at the fire department. Denise wanted to know if you were going to have anything for that.
Selectman Watson, you asking that?
Yeah.
I'll have to refer that to the fire chief.
Well, we didn't have anything formal planned for this year. Just for availability, people being around, come on.
At, at what time?
If, if it's going to go off, it's nine, I believe.
It usually starts at like 8:30 and then there's the bells at like 9:15 or something like that.
Yeah, is it 8:46 and then?
Yeah, it's something, there's a couple of different times. I've done it the last two years, I think, or three years. But I didn't hear about anything actually being formally.
Yeah, we didn't. We just trying to find people that are going to be around is, is just being kind of tough this year.
Yeah, unfortunately, I.
Work schedules.
You're looking at 8:45, nine o'clock?
We could do nine o'clock. Nine o'clock.
Nice, okay.
I made a decision.
Doesn't Hareful do one, too?
I believe.
I think that was the conflict before, that they was trying to get people at both locations or.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Have you, have you been in touch with the police department and they, contacted them and they'll?
I have not.
You haven't, haven't contacted them?
I can chat with them first thing in the morning if there, if there's anybody going to be around.
Sounds like a plan.
All right.
And maybe, maybe we could get word out to the town employees that you're in town hall, they could stop over there for a minute or two at nine o'clock.
If their duty's in function, so allow them to. I haven't seen that there'd be a problem.
Sounds like a deal.
Great job.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir. Is that it? Oh, that's really sweet. Okay, we have Selectman's time. Shall we start at this end of the table? Selectman Wood?
Sure. Deborah Stewart asked me to read a couple of things for her. This is to us. Just wanted to thank you, the town, and the police and fire department for being there for my mom and family, for always being there at the end of the day. Debbie lost her mom recently. But she did want to thank everyone who helped her with that. And also to let Bill know that pumpkin night is still on and her mom had left money to help fund that. And she just wanted me to mention her mom's passing and that she wanted to request that pumpkin night still proceed.
Absolutely. Maybe we can do something to honor her memory during that night. Selectman Carpenter? Selectman Dunn?
No, just to have an agenda item, as I said earlier, land sales agenda item to talk part of more. Road commissioner's position, we'll talk about that more. And if, it sounds like Mike's already got a good handle on what's going on with the fire review. So I think, you know, I didn't know about the, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I didn't, wasn't brought up to speed on that. So I'm good with that. And, and another agenda item, to talk about the pines and possibly having a project here with a CPC in this board. So we can talk about it further.
Yes. Selectman Watson?
I don't have anything at this time.
I don't have anything really at this time, other than I'd like to share a couple of things with you. First of all, I'd like to say a couple of words about Senator John McCain. I think this country lost a true patriot. And I fear that we will never see another man quite like him again. A real hero in my, in my opinion. And then, some of you may know that the 50th anniversary of the U.S. Tennis Open was held in this past couple of weeks at Arthur Ashe Stadium, was one of the main venues for the event. And watching the ceremonies, he was quoted, kind of struck something in my nerves. So I'm hoping it strikes something in, in the audience's nerve. He was once said that what you take from the world makes a living. It's what you give back makes a life. And I thought about that. And I think if we all took that just a little bit, might have a just a little bit better place tomorrow. That's it. God bless America. God bless Groveland. And thank you for your time and efforts here today. With that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn on second. All those in favor?
Yep.
Terrific. Thank you.